Good evening and welcome to the Ward Six Candidates Forum. We're at MCN Channel Six and my name is Dave Alderson. I'm here on behalf of the Cedar Riverside Community Council, one of the sponsors of this evening's conversation. And we want to thank our partners at MCN Channel Six and also the League of Women Voters for helping us conduct the forum this evening with candidates Abdirizak Bihi and council member Jamal Osmond. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again and welcome. This is the candidate forum for the Ward Six City Council seat. My name is Chris Sigurdsson. I am a longtime member of the Minneapolis League of Women Voters and a resident of Ward Six thirteen. I will be your moderator tonight. All candidates who have announced they are running for this position have been invited to participate. Ward Six, located in central Minneapolis, is a vibrant, active, and engaged neighborhood with a longstanding tradition of cultural diversity and settlement. It contains Minneapolis's largest East African community and is the center of the Native American community. It has thriving businesses and cultural activities and a large arts community. I would like to thank the Cedar Riverside Community Council, Phillips West Neighborhood Organization, Elliot Park Neighborhood, and the Seward Neighborhood Group for sponsoring this forum. Ward Six also includes the Stevens Square and Ventura Village neighborhoods. We also thank MCN Six Studio for broadcasting and recording this forum. There is no live audience, but this forum is being livestreamed to the Minneapolis League of Women Voters Facebook page and broadcast on cable channel six in the Twin Cities. The recording will be available unedited for viewing on the Minneapolis League of Women Voters Facebook page and on their website. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Sponsorship of this forum is a public service, providing you with an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss important issues. The views expressed here tonight are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters or the sponsoring neighborhood organizations. Just a reminder, Election Day is November 2nd and early voting has already started at the Minneapolis Elections and Voter Services Office at 980 Hennepin Avenue East. On your ballot, you have the opportunity to vote for the offices of Mayor, City Council, Park Board seats, and the Board of Estimate and Taxation, as well as three charter amendments. Tonight, you will hear from two candidates for the Ward Six City Council seat. As a reminder, Minneapolis has ranked choice voting elections instead of primaries. You have the power to rank three candidates in order of preference on the November ballot. For all races with more than two candidates, you should consider not just your first choice, but your second and third choices as well. I want to thank tonight's candidates for running for the city council and for putting themselves forward publicly to make our city a better place to live. Our candidates are Abdirizak Bihi and Jamal Osmond. We will start the candidate forum with opening statements. Each candidate will be given one and a half minutes for their opening statements and later one and a half minutes for their closing statement. The order to begin was determined by a coin toss, and we will begin with candidate Bihi. The order of answering questions will be rotated thereafter. Candidates will have one minute to respond to the questions. Please note, our timekeeper will have a 15-second sign and also a stop sign to be sure each candidate has the full allotted time. Questions have been received in advance and can be submitted in the Facebook chat during the forum. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be asked. Those that fall into the same general topic area may be consolidated to allow us to cover as many topics as possible in the allotted time. All questions submitted are the property of the Minneapolis League of Women Voters. Let's begin with opening statements. Mr. Bihi.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters, who really has taken the time to bring us together and also with our audience. My name is Abdirizak Bihi. I have been working with the East African community primarily for almost half of my life. And the last 24 years, I've lived and worked in the neighborhood of Cedar Riverside of Ward Six. I have done a lot of work. I've worn a lot of hats. The capacity of providing social services, helping people find affordable housing, helping new Americans resit it in Minnesota. I also did a lot of work in advocating for young people, because in my neighborhood, we have the highest number of youth, birth density of land in the state of Minnesota. The average age of that neighborhood is, or the community, is 20 years, and the unemployment is really high. So I've done a lot of work in terms of engaging the community and partnering with organizations like Emerge, Samar Academy, and a couple other OICs to really use those resources to bring jobs, trainings, such as CDL, and many other opportunities. I am running in order to bring those opportunities and relationships and experiences to make better our lives in Ward Six and in the city of Minneapolis.
Thank you. Mr. Osmond.
Good evening. My name is Jamal Osmond. I am Minneapolis council member and also a candidate for Ward Six. Happy Indigenous people, everyone. I was elected about 12 months ago. A very tough time in our city was going through. People in Ward Six made their decisions to elect me, and that has been an honor to be in the office. But I will tell you, it has been a very tough 12 months, coming in with divided council and a lot of very important issue that we were talking about. In the middle of pandemic and not even be able to join my colleagues in the city hall, I had to make very tough decisions. My decisions were based on what the interests of Ward Six are, and that is, public safety has been number one and has been the issue of the city of Minneapolis. I have now joined one group or another, either progressive or establishment. My votes have been a swing vote, and I want to keep it that way, because I know what the residents in Ward Six want. I have worked in Ward Six for the last 15 years. I'm not here to talk about my work and the job I have done, but I'm here to talk about the future of Ward Six. There's a lot of issue that are facing, and I believe I had a good start, and I would like to get your vote to continue the work I have started for 12 months. Thank you.
Thank you. The first question will go again to Mr. Osmond. No, it won't. Yes, it will. Sure. I'm so sorry. Okay. Charter Amendment Two on Public Safety appears on the ballot for response by the voter. It reads as follows: Shall the Minneapolis City Charter be amended to remove the Police Department and replace it with the Department of Public Safety that employs a comprehensive public health approach to the delivery of functions by the Department of Public Safety, with those specific functions to be determined by the mayor and city council by ordinance, which will not be subject to exclusive mayoral power over its establishment, maintenance, and command, and which should include licensed peace officers or police officers, if necessary, to fulfill its responsibilities for public safety, with the general nature of the amendments being briefly indicated in the explanatory note below, which is made part of the ballot? And the explanatory note reads, "This amendment would create a Department of Public Safety combining public safety functions through a comprehensive public health approach to be determined by the mayor and council. The department would be led by a commissioner nominated by the mayor and appointed by the council. The Police Department and its chief would be removed from the city charter. The Public Safety Department could include police officers, but the minimum funding requirement would be eliminated." And the first question is, for Mr. Osmond, do you support this proposal, yes or no, and why?
Well, thank you so much. This is probably the most important question that Minneapolis residents face, and we have argued it for the last eight months. This is initiative put by citizens of Minneapolis. Yes, I do support the question, and I want to answer, I will vote for yes, and I'm telling you why. That doesn't mean the cops will be off the street. Minneapolis, especially in Ward Six, has faced many challenges on public safety. I have supported the chief recommendation. I have supported the police, increased the number of police officers in Ward Six. But what I want to see is, we cannot continue the way things are. We have seen the killing of George Floyd. We have seen money-black youth and people that have suffered in the hands of police. If anyone had encountered with police, it's a Muslim black man that is standing here. I'm here for change, and I would like to see change happen. That, also, I do support more police officers in our streets, especially people that look like us. Thank you.
Mr. Bihi.
Hi. In any way, I know this amendment is right in the hands of the voters in Ward Six and in the city of Minneapolis. I will let the people vote, and in any way, whether it goes no or yes, I will require enough police officers that any major city, American city, has to be included in any form that going forward. We will have police, enough officers to keep our city safe. On top of that, we will have a new program and resources for mental health providers and also social workers that deal with almost about huge amount of calls that unnecessarily our MPD officers have to deal with. They don't have to. We must invest mental health professionals and social workers, and also minor traffic shouldn't be handled by police. I strongly support that we should be safe and have police officers in any form that comes forward.
Thank you. And the first question, or second question for Mr. Bihi, what problems specifically or issues with policing and public safety do you view as the most important?
Policing should be primarily for violent crimes. Our city has seen a huge spike in violent crimes against our elders, against our citizens, against our properties and businesses. A lot of people, I have a family, and I live in Cedar Riverside, and I have two daughters who were born there. And one goes to the UFM and one goes to South High. They're afraid to ride our beautiful LRT trains to school and to work and also to college. That is not what we are supposed to be. We should be feeling safe from young people to elders. I believe police officers should be given enough resources to deal with violent crimes and also investigations. Minor things and minor offenses like traffic minors should be left to be dealt with by unarmed officers, and in order for a lot of people also to be safe in case they have a warranty or something else. Mental health calls and also social workers, domestic calls should be funded, professionals who deal with those issues.
Mr. Osmond.
Yes, I believe the question you ask is, what is the problem with the policing?
What problems or issues with policing and public safety do you view as the most important?
I think the most important is public safety. As an immigrant, as a black man, as someone who left a country that has been, you know, that went through civil war, we came here for safety. Safety is number one important to me, and the public should feel safe. People should be able to go to their groceries, should be able to go to school and get off the bus and enjoy the parks. But one thing I will tell you is that the police need to look like the community. It has to reflect the community. That's why I've supported recruitment classes, the mayor's budget proposal last year, to include and have a resource for youth, East African, Native American, Latino, and Black American to be trained for them to be the police officers. We want police officers from Minneapolis, not Lakeville, not somewhere else far. We want them from here. We want them to look like us, because I believe they will not hurt us if they are from our community. Thank you.
Okay. The next question for Mr. Osmond. What specific duties would you want to see included as part of the public safety unit in Minneapolis?
Yes, I would say every call, every 911 call should not be officer with a gun. It should be a professional-trained mental health. In my experience working as a mental health educator, if individual is experiencing mental health crisis, the least thing they want to see is a police officer. We want to create a mental health response, the same as Hennepin County Cope. We want to make sure we are using the community and people from the community to keep our community safe. I believe that we always need professionals trained with guns to deal with criminal and crimes, but at the same time, we have to find alternative policing, and we have the resource behind that. Alternative policing is mental health response, is community engagement, and also, I want to see all public safety in one department, and I have a lot to explain after that. Time's running out.
Mr. Bihi.
Could you say the question again?
What specific duties would you want to see included as part of a public safety unit in Minneapolis?
I think a lot of things should be included. I think policing, as usual, does not serve us anymore at all, so we need a change. As I said earlier, mental health providers, social workers, violence interrupters, community leaders, neighbor organizations. I think we should have a comprehensive policing. And the other thing I want to add is that 20-something years ago, I was the one who dealt with Chief Olson to really recruit the first Somali-American police officers when 72% of the community were against the police. So the department, what I want to see is the same resources, as I said earlier, funding resources for mental health providers, social workers, and violence interrupters. We want to make sure that all of us feel safe. Thank you.
And the next question again for you, Mr. Bihi. With police reform being a big issue on the ballot this year, how can we be sure that our community doesn't get neglected? We already have a hard time having officers patrol our area, and the officers that do at times have a strong cultural misunderstanding when it comes to dealing with ethnic groups in the community. What actions will be taken to make our community more safe?
Thank you. I just want to start by saying that I myself, I'm a victim of a violent crime. I was charged last September. I understand the fear it creates to residents every day in our city. I think we should have the Police Department and officers. Number one, we should weed out, we should screen those officers and see their background, what kind of affiliations they have with right wing and Nazi and hateful groups. We should make sure that we train our officers, whatever plan that comes out. We should train culturally competent. We should have at least 50% by 2025 or 2028 who hail their home from Minneapolis and part of this community. Community policing depends on not having different officers every day, but having the same officers for the same community where they know each and everyone. So relationships are important in our public safety. Training for our remaining officers is vital.
Thank you. Mr. Osmond.
Thank you. What I have experienced of 12 months, in the middle of a division with the council, I think that what we need to do is support the chief, the only person that we trust our safety. We should not be held in resource from him. We should be able to give him as much resource as we can. Last Friday, council was divided by seven-six. My vote was the swing vote to give the chief, when he was asking to give early intervention program, a grant we received from a donor. Some council members do have an issue with the chief and do have an issue with the police. We should not be, we should be trusting the chief. At the same time, I think that police officers need to have as much resource as they can to be a better policing and better community. So yes, thank you.
Thank you. And for you again, Mr. Osmond. Charter Amendment Number One on Government Structure appears on the ballot for response by voters. It reads as follows: Shall the Minneapolis City Charter be amended to adopt a change in its form of government to an executive mayor-legislative council structure, to shift certain powers to the mayor, consolidating an administrative authority over all operating departments under the mayor, and eliminating the executive committee? Do you support this amendment, yes or no, and why?
Well, like I say, I have been only here 12 months. I don't know what the problem is with the structure we have right now. Obviously, if you ask me to take all my power away as a new council member, you won't take me serious if I say yes. So yeah, no, I don't support it. I think that Ward Six office means a lot to immigrant communities. This is the office for everything. We get calls from Rochester, St. Cloud, immigrant issue, all the issue we have. So if you limit the only window and the only door we have in the government as an immigrant council member, if you limit that from the resident, that would not be a good. I think that the structure that we have right now, it's not perfect, but I haven't seen a lot to say that I'm against it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bihi.
Yes. From the murder of George Floyd by Minneapolis police officers and the aftermath of that unfortunate event, we have learned that we don't have where the buck stops in Minneapolis. We have 14 mayors. Most likely, it might be next city council, who knows? And I don't want to take power from me, but what I want to do is, we are, our system is very rare and confusing. We can't have 14, especially if the yes vote goes on. We can't have 14 people managing the police officers and their behavior and what to do on our public safety. We need an office where the buck stops. We need someone to hold responsible, not a crowd of people. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. The next question, again for you, Mr. Bihi. One primary concern with the organization of the city council is lack of accountability. What changes would you support to provide better accountability?
Accountability is what's lacking, because the system we have right now is part of it. That's why we need the legislative body, the city council, to focus on the services our residents need, and the mayor to focus on managing those departments and running the city businesses. The city council has a lot to do for our city and residents, whether it's a public safety, whether it's working on levies, whether it's working on financing or businesses. We have, our city council has a lot to do to better our lives in Minneapolis, not only in Ward Six. And that, with that, we will have more accountability on the city council, our elected officials, and also our mayor, chief executive. I think that's another way to find accountability and lose the 14 mayors we have right now.
Thank you. Mr. Osmond.
Thank you. First of all, the elected official has to see themselves as a servant for the community they represent. They shouldn't be putting individual or personal interest before them. For me, when I got there, I felt like what I expected was leaders coming together on a table to talk about the best practices, how do we move forward, how do we compromise. But what I have seen, and I'll be honest with you, is division within the council, and that means six here and six there, and each of them was pulling me on the side to join them one. But I chose to stand in the middle of the road to make a decision for what's best for our community. So accountability is very important to the city. I think residents deserve better, and they want elected officials that are honest, that are hardworking, that are there to work for them, not self-interest.
Thank you. Mr. Osmond again. How would you plan on connecting with all community members, whether they share your perspective or not, to build trust, get input, and give updates on your work? How would you personally be accountable and your work transparent?
I think, yes, as I talked about in my last statement, is that when you are there for the resident of Ward Six, and specifically for the resident of Ward Six, then your job will become a lot easier. But when you worry about, you know, which group you should join or not, then that creates a problem. I believe that residents, all Minneapolis, deserve council members that are able to wake up and do the work they are told to do. We have to show leadership. In my time here, I have shown leadership. Even though I was the new kid on the block that joined the council, I was the one who was calling the mayor, calling the president council, council president, negotiating with the big issue that we needed. So I think the 12 months that I have experienced gives me the edge to be a council member and finish the work I have started. Thank you.
Mr. Bihi.
I think we owe accessibility to our voters. We need to be accessible. I think I have the experience of working with people and responding to people's needs. That's the primary job we need to do. We have been, if I'm elected, I believe I was sent, and that's true, I was sent there by the voters of Ward Six, and they owe me to listen to their concerns, to answer their phones, to return their emails, and to be accessible and build that relationship. As I go around Ward Six, I'm hearing a lot of neighborhoods that are feeling that the city council, their ward, is inaccessible, and they don't know what to do, and they're frustrated, and nobody's hearing them, especially in these trying times. We need to be responsible to the people who voted for us, to listen to them, to their concerns. By the way, our ward is very diverse, at the same time, it's alien from each other. I am a united that will bring people together and sit down with them and listen to them and take their concerns from the neighborhood level to the city council, not vice versa.
The next question, again for you, Mr. Bihi. An additional amendment on the ballot addresses rent control. Amendment Number Three reads as follows: Shall the Minneapolis City Charter be amended to authorize the city council to regulate rents on private residential property in the city of Minneapolis? This amendment would, one, authorize the city council to regulate rents on private residential property in the city of Minneapolis by ordinance. Two, provide that an ordinance regulating rents on private residential property could be enacted in two different and independent ways. A, the city council may enact the ordinance. B, the city council may refer the ordinance as a ballot question to be decided by the voters for approval at an election. If more than half of the votes cast on the ballot question are in favor of its adoption, the ordinance would take effect 30 days after the election or at such time as provided in the ordinance. Do you support this amendment, yes or no, and why?
I do. I do, and why I support this, the murder of George Floyd did not only reveal a lot of issues that are ailing in our society, but before George Floyd's murder, homelessness was terrible. And now, we see incumbents in every neighborhood in our communities. I'm a renter for 24 years in the same Cedar Riverside apartment with my family, and I know what it means for people to, most of our communities, they cannot afford to pay the rent or to feed their families. So yes, and I also support the study commissioned by the city of Minneapolis done by Cura, C-U-R-A, that really supports that 3% or inflation adjustment to the rent control should be implemented. I believe that's very important, and it will help our public safety, it will help our unsheltered community, and those who are on the verge to lease their homes or their apartments.
Thank you. Mr. Osmond.
Yes, of course I support it. I am the co-author of this. I am the co-author of this amendment, and my name is on it. I think that it's time for us to give the staff, the city staff, the community, and also the landlords, a chance to discuss this issue and to talk about this issue. We need to give a resident a chance and a break for the hike of the rent. My district is over 90% renters, and I have worked in housing setting for the last seven years before the council. So, yes, Minneapolis rent is going up. We have seen the homelessness and eviction. Not just do we rent control, but also we need to put the policies that will keep the community in their units, and also the documents and the legal documents we have and the laws that we have, we need to make sure that we are keeping up those and keeping the resident in their units. So, yes, of course, I support rent stabilization. Thank you.
And again for you, Mr. Osman. Related. What percent annual rent increase would you support, and are you in favor of exemptions for certain dwellings such as single-family homes, fourplexes, et cetera?
Yeah, I'll separate those two questions. I think that I'm not an expert to say that I will increase this percentage or that percentage. That's why in my statement, I say we need to talk to the city staff to do their work, and also the landlords, to come together, and also the council to come together and come up something that will keep the resident in their units. It's a long process, and I think it will take for us to come up something that is perfect. If I give you a number today, damn, I'm not the expert of that. So I'll let the landlords and the city staff and expertise to make that. That's why we put this question forward. If it passes, we will sit down and we'll take a process. And also, I'm sorry, what's your second question? I separated.
It was, do you favor exemptions for certain types of housing, like single-family?
Yes, yes, yeah. I think 2040 calls dense in our community. We need to increase more housing and more units. I have dealt with over eight encampments in Ward Six. We have the largest encampment in Minnesota. We deal with that every day. These folks need help, and we need to create more units that are available for the folks' families. Thank you.
Okay. Again, Mr. Behe.
Yes, as I said earlier, I do support 3% annual increases or inflation adjustment. We need to keep our working class that continue to turn the engine of our economy and small businesses to stay in their homes, whether it's houses, homes, or they are in apartments like me, like my family. It's very important. Big part of the problem is that we always, the city council, always looks and works with and listens to the big, huge developers rather than the working families. I think that's what we're missing. 2040 Plan has a lot of great things in it, and it has also issues, environmental issues that are not really addressed, such as the sewage system, it's not in the plan, how are we going to mitigate that? Also, the density issue, we're not, we're just thinking in that plan about the developers, not the middle people, people who own houses that want to turn into legal trilets so they can make money out of that. We are forgetting those people.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to just insert in here, the second part of that question, which I might not have been clear for you, was, in terms of the rent control plan and the limits on rent increases, would either of you favor exemptions from the rent control for certain dwellings, for such as single-family homes or fourplexes, et cetera? That was the nature of the second part of the question.
Second part of the question. So that's for me?
Yeah, for you now.
Great. Well, I haven't read that part of it yet, but I do not believe, so far, that at this stage where I am, and I do not believe any exemptions. I believe we should be fair with the housing, a fair act, that we should have 3% increases for everyone at this stage where I am right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Osman.
I'm not quite sure.
Should there be exemptions for certain types of housing from rent control?
From rent control? Oh, no.
Such as single-family?
No, no, it should, yeah, it should be single-family homes, and it should be, we all live here, we can, we can make it exemptional. I think that all units should, should be under this. I do understand that there's business of community, that's why I put the question first, for them to find the solution for us. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying both of you. Okay, again for you, Mr. Osman. How would you ensure that such a proposal does not impose an undue burden on responsible property owners, rental property owners?
Yes, very good question. Well, I have talked to apartment owners, I have visited their offices, I have called my old colleagues that I have worked with in the housing, and they all favor it. They all want to make sure that, you know, that we put a common sense policies that our community will work with. So I think we are putting policies that will make sense. I do believe that if we come up with a number, like my colleagues say, my, our colleagues say that we should put a 3%, who says that maybe they're not increasing? What is the rate right now? Is it smaller than that? So that's why I think that landlords do have a right, and they are part of the community and part of the business owners and taxpayers. They should be on the table when those decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Behe.
I think my colleague Osman thinks, he's thinking more of the developers and big developers and forgetting about the working class and small property owners. We should have policies and incentives to help those developers, small developers or families owning properties, small properties, to incentivize, you know, to help them, encourage them to really accept the 3% and also survive in the market.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Behe, again for you. What do you see as the long-term impact on the rental stock in a community which enhance, which enacts some forms of rent control, recognizing that when supply does not meet demand, the result is an upward pressure on rental rates?
Absolutely. You know, if you look back at that Cura, C-U-R-A study that was commissioned by the city itself, it has looked in every dimension of this equation, and it came out that 3% increases are ideal, and it will not hurt anyone. There are cities that really pretended to use that, like in California or LA, but it turned out worse than people expected. So I think the study done by Cura is perfect, and it was commissioned by the city of Minneapolis, and it's effective.
Thank you. Mr. Osman.
Yes, I think that the policies, the purpose of this policy is to make sure that we are making a common sense policies. When I moved to this country 21 years ago, we were paying $645 for two bedrooms, and now people are paying over $2,000. So, of course, in this rate, there has to be some kind of, you know, policies that go forward. But I want to pass this question. I want to make sure that we are creating opportunity for our community. Home ownership, it's very important in East African community and Ward Six. We want to make sure we are putting policies and putting resource for homeownership educations and creating, for people to buy and own homeownership. So for me, I'm proud to say that I'm homeowner recently, and it's just been an honor. And I think that in our community, people are paying high rent, but if, also if we put policies and put incentives for homeownership and put through policies in city of Minneapolis, homeownership education should be, should be my, a great plan.
Thank you. And again for you, Mr. Osman. There are many properties that are popping up in our area, it's very related to what you said. There are many properties that are popping up in our area that open up under the guise of being quote-unquote affordable. Families who rent these properties are expected to pay on average $1,200 a month for a two-bedroom on top of other necessities such as food, electricity, water, et cetera, on an hourly salary of less than $15 an hour. What specifically can be done to help the people in our community that can't afford to pay rent even when they are offered quote-unquote affordable housing?
I think, let's just be honest, honest, if you're, if the pay scale is not going up and it's staying the same and the rent is increasing, of course, people can't afford it. That's why we have a lot of homeless in our community. That's why we have a lot of evictionists, people that can't pay their rent, especially the pandemic that we went through. So I believe that the work we need to do is create more opportunity for individuals, for youth, for employment, and making sure that we are, you know, putting policies that increase individuals to get paid well and keep up their expenses. You know, a family of four in a two-bedroom cannot afford, city of Minneapolis, it's very expensive, you know? And I would say that, you know, as we call it affordable, the honest is, it's not affordable for money families in Ward Six. And I'm here to, you know, create opportunities and bring resource from City Hall and bring it to Ward Six.
Thank you. Mr. Behe.
You know, that's why I am a great supporter of public housing or income-based housing. We need to be aware of our working-class families that are really working two jobs and still can't afford the market rate rental, that's, and that's part of the problem that creates the unsheltered community. Forty percent of that community in the beginning was people who had, were people who had jobs, part-time or full-time job, but couldn't afford. Not everyone has a chemical or addiction, but the real people, real families. I'm a family man, I have kids, and I don't want to see my kids or somebody's kids living in a shelter to shelter. That's why we need to stop privatizing public housing units. We need public housing units to stay in Minneapolis Public Housing Agency. We also need to invest by working with the county and partnering with the state and other stakeholders to bring those resources and build more low-income housing or income-based housing.
Thank you. And again for you, Mr. Behe. How do you plan to work with your neighborhood associations after the approved budget cuts take place for the associations? How do you envision neighborhood organizations continuing to serve our community?
I think the vital, most important organizations in our community are neighborhood organizations. The same organizations that co-hosted us tonight and put us together. And the reason being is, I'll tell you, when we had the pandemic, the county and the state were confused how to deal with it. And the first thing they did is, that's when everyone realized that the neighbor organizations are the key to reach the public and everyone. That's how we got our masks, the food we needed, the rental assistance we needed. I think my top priority is to bring all the neighbor organizations in Ward Six and meet with them monthly or by monthly meeting, and take the, all the feedback and the voices that they represent, and get the budget and the resource they need. They are the ones who do after-school programming. They are the ones who keep our families fed. We need to empower them and bring the resources and increase the resources and empower our neighbor organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Osman.
Well, I am proud to say that this year we have increased funding for neighborhood organizations. Neighborhood organizations play a huge role in our community, and it's been an honor to meet with them every month for all the six neighborhoods we have in Ward Six. And they play a huge role. You know, they deal with tenant rights, they come together and clean up our neighborhood. You know, they talk about public safety and security. And, yes, we need to increase more funding. And this year, actually, we have taken money from so-called rich neighborhoods in different wards and bring them here in Ward Six. Ward Six was one of the neighborhoods that have increased funding for this year, and we want to see that. And one thing I'd like to see, all the neighborhood that are watching, we need to create diversity in our community. We need to have more people from, from the community to be the board members and so on, and it's just been an honor to work with them, and I'm proud of them.
Thank you. Mr. Osman, again. What can we do to help revitalize the retail and business corridor on Cedar Avenue? Right now, there are several adult daycares and other facilities of that nature. While those services are needed, can we reserve the space that is the most visible on Cedar for businesses that will draw people in? What would your plan, what would be your plan to revitalize Cedar Avenue to the once-happening, fun, and exciting place it used to be?
Yes, Cedar Riverside is a historical place, and right now it's iconic to East African community. That's why I want to bring Lot A, bring back Lot A. We have actually moved forward with the former council member, Ward Sami, and mayor talking about this, there was nothing that had moved. But right now, I have talked to the business owners in the community, I have talked to the people that have invested in the community, and the Lot A, it's a project that the city needs to resource. We keep hearing the city don't have money. Well, the city built US Bank Stadium, and they should be putting priorities for economic development in the most underserved community in Ward Six. So Lot A, bring back Lot A, and that is my vision, and hopefully by 2024, we should be having more affordable housing and a thriving community in Cedar Riverside.
Thank you. Mr. Behe.
Well, that's where I live, and that's the businesses I patronize every day, whether I'm getting my Somali tea or my goat meat. Yes, we would love to see, every now and then, the neighborhoods change. And I remember, not remember, I don't remember, but there was a time that it was only Norwegian communities living there, working at the Sibyl River. It changed. There were the Swedish community back in 50s. Right now, it's the East African. Before them, there were Amang community. So that's the American dream, and it will change. Yes, we would like to, before I speak on that, partnering with West Bank Business Associations. That's a very important association that really has the expertise and works well with those businesses. We need to invest in that organization because that organization has the relationship and the capacity, most important relationships, with every individual business there, whether it's mountain, mountain-ering store, or whether it's a sagal store or barakal restaurant, that's where the relationship is. And that's, again, the neighbor organizations, whether they're business or not, we need to really focus on them and build that relationship with them and go through them.
Thank you. And again, Mr. Behe. The rise of opioid use among young Somalis and East Africans is higher than ever. What is going to be done to help and educate our youth? Will there be outreach to educate parents? Too many kids are dying and is being misrepresented in the numbers because of the social stigma in the community. How do we educate people and let them know there is help available if they need it?
Very important aspect that almost every parent is concerned. Again, we, talking about neighbor organizations, we need the money and the resources from city council to bring to Brian Coyle Community Center, to Cedar Riverside Opportunity Center, and other organizations like Mixed Blood, Cedar Cultural Center, where you can use arts, education, and outreach, and also invest. Years ago, we used to have after-school programs right in the high-rises, what is called Riverside Blood Tenant Association, a nonprofit organization that doesn't function anymore. We need to empower the tenants, reopen that organization, reopen the community rooms where we used to have a couple hundred kids right after school, come over there, eat their lunch, do after-school programs, and be home. We wouldn't see any kid doing any drugs on the street. Now, we have all these young men doing, in our ram, that's where I live, in the ram, in the, in the stairs. It's difficult, so we need the funding and the dollar money, the dollars, to really prevent that first, and then engage and bring culturally competent resources and treatment.
Thank you. Mr. Osman.
Yes, this has been probably one of the toughest things that I have to deal with in my time here in 12 months. My number one priority is to deal with pandemic, before the pandemic, I call it. The East African have been neglected, not just by government, but also institutionists like, in the neighborhood institutions, like Expro College and Fairview Clinic and so on. I have sit down with all the, all the leaders and make sure that we are actually addressing this issue. We put through money, Health Department, to make sure that I bring in more resource and using the community organizations. We have partnered with Health, M Health Sherman Associate, to have a clinic for opioid treatment in one of the high-rise buildings. And also, we brought Office of Violence Prevention in Ward Six. That has not been, this is the first time we brought office, a young, 15 Somali outreach peer specialist walking on the streets that are dealing with these youths. So, yes, I continue to put more money and make sure that we are helping this youth and create an opportunity, especially employment opportunity for youth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess for you again. I think this may be our last question, so. Institutions, this is also related to what you've both been talking about. Institutions like the Cedar Riverside Community School have been shut. have been shut down in the area. Since a large percentage of the population in the Cedar Riverside area are young adults and children under the age of eighteen, what can be done about getting new programs and facilities for our children to have access to resources that will help them further themselves and their education?
Well, it's obvious that we have failed schools in Minneapolis, especially in Cedar Riverside neighborhood, Minneapolis Public Schools. That's why many East African communities are finding charter schools to take their kids there. It, it's really sad to have this school failed. And it just comes from the leadership and also the funding from the government to create this. I think it needs a better leadership and making sure that we are partnering with institutions around Oxford College. It's probably one of the top schools in Minnesota, University of Minnesota. They can lead this kind of things. We want to make sure they are bringing their expertise to bring back this Cedar Riverside school that have closed. It's sadly that it's closed down. And that's one of the, one of the things that, that failed our community is lack of leadership. And we want to make sure that we are partnering with expertise to bring back schools.
Thank you. Mr. Behe?
Well, I live there, you know, and I'm actually was on the board of Cedar Riverside Community School, well, a while back before it failed. We used to have a great teachers there for twenty-something years. We had Coach Weber, who really taught all our girls and, and still does, while she's not even in the school, coached them into basketball, takes them around the country, including my daughters. We have been failed. The school is a building, did not fail. The community did not fail. It's the system that allows immigrant communities to be prior on and personalize. People are making business out of our school system, trying to take over. Right now, I objected that. And I said, let the community choose what kind of school they want. So the first thing I will do is engage the community to elect their own board members of the Riverside Plus Tenant Association. Number one problem. Number two, choose the school they want to work with. I've been part of that school as a board member. The physical agent was Oxford College. They've, they refused. Finally, it would become Blissbury United. It, they left because it was personalized as a business, as a business, like the Ripta is being personalized. There are things that we need in institutions that we need to change and empower those mothers and fathers and their kids in order to thrive and get educated and use those resources. I live there. I know what the issues are.
If you want to add a few seconds? Your answer or anything? Okay, thank you.
It's all right.
Oh, I didn't see that.
I'm just going to give you a quick lightning round. And then we'll, we'll proceed to your closing statements. And what is, what do you love about Ward Six? Go ahead, three things.
Arts, food, and the diversity of people.
Thank you.
Well, definitely diversity. You know, we bring a lot of great things to Minneapolis. Immigrant community, there has been many immigrant communities with different backgrounds and different geographic backgrounds that came through Cedar Riverside. And now it's East African time. It's just beautiful, hard-working people that deserve representation, that deserve better from government that they have. So, yeah, it's just, it's just an honor to be, to be their council member.
It's a good three. All right. We now have come to the end of the question-answer portion of the evening, and we move to closing remarks. Each candidate has, has one and a half minutes for a closing statement. We will begin with Mr. Osman.
All right. Thank you so much, Ward Six resident. It's been an honor to serve you. It's been very tough twelve months. And we face many challenges in Ward Six. I think we need a leadership in the City Hall. As I have shown my short time and the work I have shown and how much connected I am to the community, it's just, it's just, it brings a lot of pressures to me. I think that I would say Ward Six has beautiful diverse community, Native American, East African and many background communities. I would say Ward Six is not River, just Cedar Riverside neighborhood. It's many neighborhoods that we have. And we face many challenges. And I think that it needs the leadership. We need to make sure that we are fighting for resource. We are putting pressure for, for the colleagues, for the other council members, for, for the mayor to bring more resource here. When I bring big projects, as I talk about on the council, they always say it's not the city priority. Well, when are we going to be the city priority? I think that it's time for us to bring more resource to our community and have someone who is not activist but who is a server in our community. And that's who I am. So thank you so much. It's been an honor. And I hope you elected me for, to complete my work.
Thank you. Mr. Behe?
Thank you very much for residents of Ward Six. And thank you very much for all the people who voted early. Ward Six has many challenges, like our city. We are in a time of challenges and a lot of barriers right now with the pandemic and the aftermath of the murder of George Floyd. We need unity. We need to unite and work together. We need to have access to this office.